Call the, uh, meeting of, uh, Town Council for June 10th to order at seven, at, sorry, 8:02. Uh, before we begin, Dave Harden wanted me to express his, uh, his, that he can't be here. He's gotta work and he works in a hospital, in case you don't know, so many people he's been saving, so let's make sure he's on the job. So, he won't be here tonight. Um, invocation and pledge of allegiance, Mr. Pia.
Heavenly Father, grant us your guidance as we are gathered here this evening in carrying out our duties to our townspeople and helping to make our town a better place in which to live. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second by Mr. O'Brien? Is there any discussion? If not, uh, we'll call it a vote. All in favor approving the minutes?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero. Next thing we now, it was a ceremony presentation with the PAL rifle team. I'm gonna turn it over to the mayor and actually Bill Perillo's gonna help out too.
Captain Wilcoxen, would you like to come forward? Captain Wilcoxen, I had your, um, description of what we're honoring tonight, but I, I thought it might be more personal if it came from you.
Sure.
Would you, would you like this, what you gave me? Or would you like?
For most of the parents in, for the Town Council, uh, that isn't that familiar with our program, I just wrote up something quick for the mayor to see and to be, uh, to be frank about the program. It started back in nineteen fifty-one and it's been around kind of a long time. So, the Stratford PAL Junior Rifle Team was founded in nineteen fifty-one by then Sergeant Joseph Carton of the Stratford Police Department. Uh, the first basic marksmanship course was held in the basement of Stratford Town Hall and the outdoor ranges soon followed. The team is open to all kids between ages of ten and eighteen and we also sponsor the Benell High School Rifle Team. Currently, the kids practice at the range in the police department and there are fifty-two kids involved with our program. And we usually go from September through April. We shoot four nights a week and then we have a number of coaches here that come in and help us during the week. Twenty nineteen has been one of our most successful years. Uh, we have a very successful team. Uh, the PAL Rifle Club has produced many successful athletes, including a, a two-time Olympic athlete, seven Division One All-Americans, and we have several kids right now who are shooting on Division One rifle teams, uh, for both, uh, the Ohio State University and Ole Miss rifle programs. Specifically, this year, we also had the state champion in the sub-junior category, which is underage fourteen, Amanda Renger, who's here with us tonight. And we've had numerous other championships and awards for the team, ranging from two first places, and we've also had several third and fourth places and nationally in the four position NRA matches, uh, the team finished third in the entire country, so we're, we're pretty proud of that. Uh, the main reason we're here tonight, though, is to recognize, uh, we have a number of our kids who are placed on the Connecticut All-State Rifle Team and we had five of our kids actually make, uh, finalists for the Junior Olympic Shooting Program out in Colorado Springs, which is pretty rare that we've actually had that many kids, uh, nowhere else in the state of Connecticut have we had that. Uh, so, uh, if you'd like, if you want me to call him up, ma'am?
Yes, I have some expectations for the, uh...
Oh, great.
Would you like to use some history about your participation in the, um, grant program?
Sure. Actually, my dad is back there tonight. He was on the, uh, Harry Wilcoxen. He, uh, was in the initial... Dad was in the initial class in nineteen fifty-one. Uh, and he, he's a retired Stratford teacher, uh, and he has been a coach for years and years and years. He recently retired and spends part of his time down in, uh, Florida with my mom, but during the summers, he comes back and helps us coach during the year. Uh, we have a couple other coaches here tonight, also Al Simon right next to him. Josie Brzezinski-Smith and Ryan Smith. And I also have, uh, two other police officers with me tonight who, who help out immensely and that would be Officer Halper and Officer Sinto. Uh, so I've been coaching about twelve years now and I do that because I feel the need to give back. Uh, Joe Carton was a great guy, uh, and I was lucky enough that he coached me very well along with the, some of the other coaches, uh, and parents of these other coaches and I was lucky enough to get a, a scholarship to go to St. John's University for athletics. Um, I was lucky enough to make All-American when I was there and try out for the Olympic team in eighty-four. And if it wasn't for this program, we wouldn't have. Stratford's one of the few places that understands how important it is. It's kind of a, a niche sport. It's not that many out there, uh, but we've been very successful and I, and I appreciate the town and the police department for allowing us to have this for all this time, so I appreciate all that. And, uh, if you want, I can call forward each of the kids. So, basically what happens to make the All-State Team is these kids have to shoot in at least four matches around the state during the year and they'll pick the top ten kids, uh, averaging those four matches together and they make a team. And there's an under fourteen category called Sub-Juniors and those are the first kids we're gonna call forward today. Yes, he's not here. So, the Sub-Junior Team members, if you wanna come up and, uh, say thank you to the mayor here, we have Nicole Gardecki. Uh, let's see. I'm not sure the Delray's made it tonight. Faith? Nope? Okay. Uh, the Lawlers I know could not make it tonight. I didn't see them, but I know we have Sidney Neemick. She's only ten years old, state champion. Okay, for the, uh, Junior Team, which is ages fifteen through eighteen, we have Veronica And Dominic Villaree could not make it tonight. So, the last category for All-State is the, uh, kids we have in the Benell High School Rifle Team. And just so you know, there's only ten kids in the entire state that can make this team and three out of those ten all came from Benell High School. Haley's sister Rose is actually gonna be starting the Coast Guard Academy and gonna be shooting on their Olympic team in the fall. Okay, and we had, uh, five Junior Olympic finalists who actually made it all the way out to Colorado Springs to compete. Uh, tonight could not be here, was, uh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, two more. One more. And, uh, Taylor Neemick for Benell, before I jump in. Okay, now we have five kids that made the Junior Olympic finalists. We also have Hope Cavulich. And Hope is a freshman at, or just finished freshman year at Quinnipiac and they don't have a rifle team, so she's sticking with us till age twenty. Sophia Kuzo could not be here tonight. She's back at Ole Miss. Uh, she's doing summer school while she's there. And, uh, my daughter Megan, who shoots for Ohio State. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, can we get a picture with everybody?
Sure.
Coaches.
Yeah, girls do rock.
Lynn, help her.
Yes. We're gonna...
Yeah, how about kids take two steps forward and crunch in so that you can get the adults in back in there. There you go, we'll fit it in. Mark, you can stand up front.
Can you hold the distance a little bit?
There you go. There you go.
Down face, down face here. And all you guys, Paul, Paul Lauren, with shoulders out.
Crunch in. Come on, Dad.
We're, we're gonna deviate a little bit. A few people wanted to say some words about, uh, PAL folks, so I'm gonna turn it over to anybody who wants to speak. Keep it short.
I'm only kidding.
I'm not. Mr. Councilman?
Thank you, sir. Um, as a youth, I was a competitive shooter, skeet, trap, in the twenty-two long rifle and the discipline and maturity that is instilled in you, that makes you a better adult, uh, it's invaluable. To find such a program in Stratford and to have my own children have an opportunity to participate in the program twenty years ago, uh, was outstanding for me. To share that experience with my own kids. So, I wish you on your continued success, all the coaches, all the participants. Uh, thank you for representing our town.
Does anybody else want, Mr. Kadim?
Just wanna say, I'm so very proud of all of you, the coaches, as well as the young ladies, and if there's young men involved, I'm proud of all of you because when you have a community like Stratford, I mean, this, this whole town to me is a very loving environment and it's good to have outlets for children to participate in many different programs, the Rifle Club, basketball and so forth. And the PAL is a big part of this town and I love the PAL, so I'm proud of all of you guys and God bless. Thank you.
Mr. Perillo? We have a retired police officer who also shot with the PAL. Would you like to say something?
Well, I was fortunate to see them always in the basement and, uh, Mr. Wilcoxen was my teacher and I was, I always knew they were a great, great outfit, so, thank you.
Anybody else? Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, uh, congratulations to everybody, but a couple of, uh, personal shout-outs. Captain Wilcoxen and I graduated Benell together. He's been a standout guy forever in his whole family, so thank you, Captain. And, uh, another shout-out to Lauren Chichowsky, who's also on my Benell Girls Track Team, where she's a standout member of the Girls Track Team also.
If there's no other comments, we'll move back to the agenda. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to the mayor for the mayor's report.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Congratulations again. So, we've had a busy week, uh, busy week, we've had a busy month, excuse me, on the eighteenth of May EMS had their open house. Uh, Sterling House hosted the Celebrity Breakfast on the twenty-first. Our Annual Veterans Breakfast that had more than three hundred veterans in attendance was on May twenty-second. On the twenty-fourth, we went to a veterans event at Benell High School. Uh, on the twenty-fourth, also, right after, several of us went to Plant Poppies at, at Eli Whitney School. And, um, then to culminate our Memorial Day events, we had a phenomenal parade and that parade was on the twenty-seventh. It was hosted by the VFW and, uh, we had our middle school bands, our high school bands, uh, participate, as well as all the honor guards. The, um, the ceremony at Academy Hill was extremely moving. We had young folks from tenth grade, ten, ten years old through, uh, graduating cadet, who is now a Lieutenant Colonel from West Point, present and speaking, so it was, uh, it was very important to Stratford to talk about how much our, what Memorial Day means to us and for all those who have gone before and their sacrifices. And to culminate that, the Indian Guides and Indian Prentices did the town float this year and they, um, memorialized the Stratford One-Fifty. And the float was, happened to be on the green for this past weekend. It's because of the weather, we moved it, but we hope to have it at, uh, Short Beach for fireworks, so if you'd like to look at it. But what they did was they, um, very cleverly and artistically, uh, demonstrated all the hundred and fifty people that had died, um, for our country, uh, who were living in Stratford at the time, from the Revolutionary War to present. And I thought it was an outstanding job on their part and I'd like to thank them very much for their, their efforts on that, um, on our behalf. Main Street Festival was June first, it was well-attended and on the, um, highlight, I guess, highlight of June so far, since we're only partway through it, uh, we announced the Stratford Point Lighthouse License Agreement from the U.S. Coast Guard. And so, that was, um, that was a great thing for us and we're working for, looking forward to using it for public betterment. Um, Marie Craig retired as treasurer from the Finance Department and Desiree Sargent retired from the, um, Tax Collector's Office. We have some upcoming events. Our Summer Concert Series starts on June eleventh at Paradise Green and the Shakespeare Property Task Force, uh, has completed the public hearings and is, and the information gathering process. Within the next couple of weeks, we will have a task force meeting to, uh, give out all the results. There's going to be a public hearing on, uh, the airport memorial, the Airport Master Plan that will be held at Bird's Eye School on Wednesday, June nineteenth, from six to eight PM in the, uh, cafeteria. And so, all residents can participate and come either and express their interest or just come to listen. Um, there is a Make Music Day, that's what I want to tell you. There's a Make Music Day, um, on June twenty, Friday, June twenty-first. I do have a proclamation. Is anybody here from Make Music Day? Um, I will give it, I will give it to them, but what this, that says is it basically, um, sets June twenty-first as Make Music Day in Stratford. And hopefully, we will have a lot of activity. If there is a website, makemusicday.org and slash, backslash Stratford and you can see all the activities that we have for people participating. So, for example, Town Hall will be a, uh, event venue on, on the front lawn. Sterling House will have a venue. There's many, many more that will have artists, uh, performing throughout the day. Fireworks are on July third at Short Beach. The groundbreaking for Route One Ten is July eighth at one o'clock, uh, in Sikorsky, right by the helicopter. Uh, the Exit Thirty-Two realignment will commence on July ninth and Blues on the Beach will be July twentieth, um, at Short Beach. More details to come. And then, one thing that I wanted to show you is, I've had this on my desk for almost a year and what this represents to me is the textile recycling program that we have been endeavoring to work very, very hard to get off the ground. Thank you, Brian Leclerc, for working with the company. Simple Recycling to get the contract correct, but what this, what this represents to me is curbside recycling that will coincide with our recycling pickups. So, if you have rags or shoes or clothing or something that you might not feel that isn't, is not appropriate or you don't wanna give to a goodwill, you can put in this bag and, and it will be recycled, um, and then Stratford will have a small reimbursement for a tipping fee. Um, and it will go, it will be every two weeks with your recycling, so that will start July fifteenth. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any questions for the mayor? There's no question? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, thank you. We're, how are people gonna get those? Are there, can they just pick them up at Public Works or?
No, they'll be sent to them and there'll be, um, more information delivered by Simple Recycling in the mail, in the mail to them.
Okay, if not, we'll go to committee reports. Oh, we got somebody else? Bill?
I just wanna thank you again for the great Veterans Breakfast that once again was a great success. And Chris Bandeki, are you here? I know he was. Thanks for coordinating. You do a great job coordinating that event.
Thanks.
Okay. And also, you forgot to mention your very successful Mayor's Golf Tournament, which raises thousands of dollars for nonprofits. And how many years is that now? Seven, eight or more?
Uh, thir, this year was the thirteenth annual.
And another great thing that happens at the Veterans Breakfast are the Quilts of Valor presented to, um, a number of veterans. And tomorrow, Frank Antonini, a Korean War veteran, will receive a Quilt of Valor over at, uh, Riverview Bistro as part of the Hearts of Hope Event, so.
Going once? Going twice? Okay. Mr. Poissons on Building Needs.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, item four point three point one, items A through H.
There's a motion. There's a second by Mr. Tiggy. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call it a vote. All in favor of?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero. Four point three point two.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to pass, uh, item four point three point two, as stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pia. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call it a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero. Mrs. Dancho, can you help me on four point four?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, on item four point, four point one, I move to strike.
Second that.
There's a second by Mr. Pia. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call it a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero. Six point one ordinance.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve six point one point one, uh, as stated.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call it a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve six point one point two, as stated.
Is there a second by Mrs. Dancho? Uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we have, I'm sorry, I didn't look at you. Yes, we'll back up. Ms...
In regards to this ordinance and the one next, we have the hard to, uh, the short page. Um, is there a discussion, maybe some overview on why this is the right time to make these revisions to the charter? Do the provisions to charter?
Town Attorney, can you help us?
Yeah, you, you have provisions in the code right now for certain boards and, and commissions and how they're appointed. Uh, where the appointing authority is set forth in the code is inconsistent with either state statutes and/or the town charter, both of which, uh, control over the provisions of the town code. The code cannot be inconsistent, uh, if there's a statutory provision or a charter provision. This just cleans up those code sections and eliminates the errors in them.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, this is sending into, to ordinance?
Correct.
So, we'll further discuss the details of that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, there's a motion on the floor and a second. We've had discussion. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call it a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve six point one point three, as stated.
Second by Mrs. Dancho. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call it a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero.
Two, yes. Um, moving on, I'd like to also make a motion to approve six point one point four, as stated, to send to ordinance.
Second by Mrs. Dancho. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve six point one point five, as stated, to send to ordinance.
Second by Mrs. Dancho. Any discussion? If not, we'll call it a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero. Six point two point one.
Chairman?
Yes.
We have a resolution for the twenty nineteen Neighborhood Assistance Act tax credit program. Uh, there's three applicants, uh, listed on the agenda. Uh, before the motion, if we vote this resolution?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pia. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call it a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes.
I will abstain because of my employment at Sterling House.
Okay, we have one abstained, so the motion passes eight zero. Six point two point two.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve six point two point two, as stated.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tiggy. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero. Six point two point three.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve six point two point three, as stated.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tiggy. Any discussion? If not, we'll call it a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero. On new business. Mr., um, this, I just wanted, for a second, for the attorneys, this, I got a question. This is the one we discussed, right?
Yes.
So, we should, we just need a motion to continue it till next month.
Yeah, well, yeah, the charter, um, requires that transfers, uh, um, funds allocated for one purpose to another purpose requires it, uh, being posted, uh, for public notice for a week. So, what you need to do is to send it to public... So, what you need to do is to send it to public notice in accordance with the charter.
Okay, so, we need a motion to send...
I'll say, I'll make that motion to send it to public notice per the charter, per the town attorney.
Is there a second? Mr. Perillo?
Just to be clear for the record, that should be a motion for items 711, 712, and 713.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So, with the, second by Mr. Perillo. Is there any discussion on this? Mr. Ken?
Thank you, Chairman. So, this item will, these three items will come up at next council meeting?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
All in favor? If there's no further discussion?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes nine-zero. So, we'll move down to 7.2.3.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve 7.2.3, be it for the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission, resolve that Thomas G. Carter of Polynice Street be hereby reappointed as a member, and also Edward Sinto of Lenox Avenue be, and is hereby reappointed of, as a member, both with terms expiring May 31st, 2024. As well as, last but not least, on the next page, David Schrader of Third Avenue be his hereby reappointed a member with the same concurrent term.
So, there's a motion. Any discussion?
Second.
I'm sorry, second. Mrs. Dantcho, thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes nine-zero. 7.2.6, Board of Assessment Appeal. Mr. Perillo?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, and how the task, and is hereby reappointed as a member of the Board of Assessment Appeal, the terms expires.
Second by Mr. Tiggy. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes nine-zero. Entertaining a motion to adjourn for Mr. P, a second by Mr. Kadim. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.